Welcome to the October 19th, 2020, meeting of the Mineral Park City Planning Commission. We have with us tonight, calling the meeting to order at 7:01 PM. We have with us tonight, six of our most loyal commission members. We have Andrew Barnes. We have Commissioner Ducardi, I do not see there you are. We have Vice Chair Michael Doran. We have Commissioner Cale. We have Commissioner Tate, and I am your Chair, Henry Riggs. Excuse me. We start our meetings with reports and announcements from staff, after which we proceed to public comment, which will be the opportunity for anyone who would like to contribute to this meeting, any public member, to indicate their desire to speak on issues that are not related to the agenda, the two items on the agenda tonight. I will repeat this, but there is a small symbol of a hand in, adjacent to the drop down box in the upper right corner of your screen. It's small, it's high, and it's left on that box, and it can, for some, be a challenge to find. But first, we'll ask staff if there are reports and announcements. Do we have our staff liaison, Ms. Sandermeier, tonight? Good evening, Corinna.
Good evening, Chair Riggs and Commissioners. So, the 201 El Camino Real Mixed Use Project is tentatively scheduled to go to city council for final action on October 27. And that concludes my reports and announcements, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Sandermeier. All right, we will proceed to the previously referenced public comment. Again, this is for, this is the opportunity for the public to make comment to the city's planning commission regarding items that are not on the agenda. The agenda items will have their own public comment period in the, usually the first third of the hearing. So, is Mr. Tapia with us tonight?
Yes, good evening Chair and fellow members of the commission and members of the public. At this time, I am not seeing any comments from members of the public, but we can give it a moment or two, if you would like.
Well, I got the, I got the prompt started early tonight, in the hope that that would help. So, if you don't see our electronic hand raised by someone in the public, as of this moment, I will close the public comment period.
Okay, yes, I can confirm that, no hands raised at this moment.
All right, thank you, Mr. Tapia, then we will move on to item E, our consent calendar. This is the approval of minutes from the September 26, 2020 Planning Commission meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved, as submitted.
Thank you, Mr. Ducardi, and do we have a second?
I would second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Doran, so we have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. If there are no comments, we will move ahead with a vote. I will call our commission members in alphabetical order, starting with Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Yes, all right, and Mr. Ducardi?
Yes.
And Mr. Doran?
I mean, yes.
Mr. Cale?
Yes.
Ms. Tate?
Yes.
All right, and I vote in the affirmative, so the motion passes 6 to 0 with Commissioner Kennedy absent. That concludes the consent calendar, and we move on to our public hearing, item F. F1 is a use permit request, applicant Chelsea Bright, for a project at 328 Central Avenue in the Willows. This is a request for a use permit to demolish an existing one-story, excuse me, single-family residence and detached garage, and construct a new two-story residence with attached garage on a substandard lot with regard to minimum lot width and area in the R1U urban, uh, single-family urban residential district. And, I'm sorry, I've forgotten who our staff, ah, Mr. Turner, this is your project.
Yes, good evening Chair Riggs and Commissioners. I don't have any written correspondence to update. However, I did have a phone call today with the neighbor on the left, so 330 Central Avenue, who expressed some concerns with the view from the stairwell, stairwell window into his yard and his bedroom, bathroom windows. Other than that, no updates to the staff report, and I'm happy to take questions.
All right, thank you, oh, and I want to make sure I disclose, I had an approximately five-minute meeting with that neighbor this afternoon regarding concerns with the stairwell window. Does anyone have any questions with regard to the 328 Central Avenue, questions for staff? All right, and, ah, Mr. Doran?
Yes, we had an email also from the neighbor who expressed a desire for the neighbor to be consulted on any changes to the property line fence. And I just wanted to inquire of staff, you know, there are laws about property line fences, and generally neighbors share responsibility for those. But I'm, it wasn't clear from the letter, what if anything, they're looking for in addition to what's legally required. And I'm just wondering if you could explain to us what the sort of default situation is with regard to property line fences and changes to them?
So, the default situation, for example, if there was no discretionary action on a project, fences, if they're just standard wooden fences, seven feet or, or lower, they don't require a building permit, they're what we call good neighbor fences. So, it's up to the two property owners to come together and, you know, come up with a solution of how to pay for the fence, where the fence is going to go. Typically, it's a civil matter, and the city stays out of it, um, for the, for the most part.
And if, if the proposed developer wanted to make changes to the fence, it wouldn't necessarily be in the application. Is that correct? You don't need a permit to build a fence in general, right?
They wouldn't need a building permit, no. Typically, it is part of the use permit application when, when there is a discretionary project, because typically the fences are part of what address privacy concerns. So, they typically are mentioned in the plan set and the staff report. And typically, the applicants would be beholden to, to the plans if they're going to build a new six or seven-foot fence, whatever the plan set would say.
Are there any changes proposed to the fence as part of this application?
There is, the, the plans state a new, the fence on that left side, the existing fence being removed, and a new six-foot fence is proposed on the property line.
Do you know what the existing fence height is?
I believe it was six feet in height, if I remember correctly.
Thanks.
Mr. Turner, I'd like to follow up on that a little bit. Given that this is a use permit, and the fence is indicated on the plans, I believe in the past, we have specifically requested that an applicant work with a neighbor on fence issues. Is that something that staff can administer in the course of the project process?
I believe so, we have had instances in, on previous projects where a condition of approval was placed on the project, and in order to fulfill the, the condition, a signed letter from the neighbor or whoever the applicant needed to work with was required before issuance of the building permit. So, there is the possibility to condition the project to, to coordinate with the neighbor on the left. And then as part of that, you can require a signed letter to staff, and then the staff can, you know, analyze whether or not that fits the condition.
As opposed to a signed letter, which is sometimes, I think, can lead to unexpected leverage. Could this commission direct that a fence proposal be presented to staff that purports to have the neighbor's approval? In order to satisfy, should it, should the commission put a condition on the, on the fence?
The, the challenge would be, you know, if, if the condition is to work with the neighbor and get their approval, the, the challenge would be to, is, would be how, how do we make sure the condition is satisfied, how do we know they actually talked to them? There, that's one route, the other route is, you could just place a condition on the project based on whatever discussion you have tonight about the fence, that just dictates what to do. For example, you could say, you know, don't touch the fence, condition the project to leave the existing fence as is. That would be pretty easy to administer from a staff perspective. Otherwise, if, if it gets to a point where you condition the project to, if it's a bit ambiguous, and there, there's nothing to really, you know, go back and say, yes, okay, they talked to the neighbor, this is how we know they talked to the neighbor. It's, it's difficult from a staff perspective to, to administer that.
All right, thank you, I think that, that's pretty clear, and that's very helpful, should we get to that point. Do we have any other questions regarding the project, Ms. Barnes?
To further that fence discussion, if the fence is on the, I'm sorry, so, I would have to need, I would need to go into the survey to see where the fence is and whose property it is on. Is that something that you know, Mr. Turner, that where this fence sits in relation to the subject property that has a use permit, is it on theirs, or is it right down the center and sharing both parts of both properties?
I have the, the survey up here. Maybe Vaughn, it might be helpful, if we could get it on the screen as well.
So, and really what I'm, I'm trying to divine is, if, if it is on the property of the development, then it changes a little bit the color of what it is these people may or may not want to do with their fence that is on their property. So, I'm just trying to understand where it is in relation to the property line and doing that.
It, it varies a little bit, portions of the fence are, do appear to be right on the property line. It does jet into the property at 3:30 Central a little bit, as it goes around an existing tree, and then it comes back to the property line towards the end of the, towards the rear of the property.
Mr. Turner, are you referring to the proposed fence in this case?
This is the existing fence.
All right, but Mr. Barnes, you're indicated in the proposed fence, am I correct?
Yeah, but as I was asking the question, I'm realizing that, you know, you would either have to demo the existing fence, or run two fences right next to each other, if you were in fact to put it all on your own property, so that's not really much of a solution. It sounds like it intermingles between both parcels, is that correct, Mr. Turner?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know, thank you.
All right, if there are no more questions, I'd like to ask the applicant to present the project.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners, I'm Anna Felver, I'm with Thomas James Holmes, and I'll be presenting on behalf of Chelsea Bright, who applied with this project. I also have our architect Jill Williams on the call, as well as our Director of Planning, Deanne Green, and our Director of Land Development, Cynthia Tebow. We're proposing a four-bedroom, three-bath, two-story, two-car attached garage in place of a one-story detached two-car garage. It is traditional style. The context has a lot of two-story elements, some one-story. There's a lot of traditional homes in, on that street, a little splash of Spanish-style homes. So, we feel that the home that we're proposing, with the traditional style, will fit and blend in really well. We are also taking on that nice porch element that I've found on other properties on the street, and creating a nice, single-story element with that porch, and stepping back the house a little bit on the second story. We also have a one-story element at the garage, and stepping back on the side with the second story to create a smaller massing. We have less than the max FAL, FAL, and we have a below lot coverage, we're at 30%. And our lot size is 6,860 square feet. We are in a floodplain zone, and we're still able to be under the maximum heights, about a foot, being at 27 feet high. We are keeping and protecting trees on the property. We have an elder in the back that we want to protect, and we have two street trees in the front that we're going to protect during construction. There are three protected trees that were reported in the arborist report as poor in health. And due to that, we are, we have proposed to remove them, and we have the permit to remove them. We are adding a 24-inch coast live oak in the front yard, which will grow to about 40 to 60 feet. Be quite lovely in the front yard. We're adding poppy trees along the sides, and the rear fencing for more privacy. We do have a two-car garage, and we also have space for two cars to park off-site. There were concerns about materials early on, and we addressed that by simplifying. We took out the board and bat, added the lap siding everywhere to simplify how many materials we were using. The metal roofing, we got rid of, to make sure that there was one roofing material that's consistent throughout. Let's see. There was a comment from the neighbor that we received about that stairwell window. And I just wanted to point out that on the elevation, it says three feet from the subfloor, but the landing is actually lower than the subfloor, so that sill height will actually be less than four foot six. So, that'll be nice, the sill will be a lot higher than, than what's perceived on that elevation. And then our setbacks, again, we are setting back a lot on the, on the left-hand side to allow for more privacy, I believe our required setbacks nine feet, and we have 15 feet, and then even more than 15 feet within that plan. And then our rear setback is, is required 20 feet, and we're setting back 41 feet. So, we're trying to keep and be aware of the neighbors, and make sure that we're being thoughtful of, of the massing of the home as well as privacy. Our window placement, we've been very careful to keep our bedroom windows on the side, that, the left side, that was set back a good distance, and keep our hallway windows on the right side, so that there's not this privacy concern there. Fencing, you mentioned fencing. We did some neighborhood outreach, we had a neighbor notice that was sent out to all the homes within a 300-foot radius. We also were in communication with the left neighbor at 3:30 Central, and the right neighbor at 2, 3:24 Central, and they both brought up the fencing concern. And typically, what we show on these site plans is the fencing, brand-new fencing on the property line, typically six feet. But, we will talk to the neighbors, we have already, and we'll continue to talk to the neighbors in person to notify them when the actual fencing will be installed. And we can have that conversation of, typically, if the neighbor wants to keep their fence, they can keep their fence, and we'll build up right next to it on our property for the new fencing for, for our house. If they would like to work with us in getting a new fence, say it's damaged, or there's a tree going through it, or what have you, we can work with them in removing their fence and putting the new fence on the property line. In this case, there's a new situation where the right-hand side isn't, the fence actually is, the new fence we're proposing is on the property line, but the original fence is actually on the neighbor's side about a foot or two, and so it's actually not on the property line currently. It's actually our neighbors, on the neighbor's fence, the neighbor's property. So, that will have to be coordinated. They do have a, a higher fence, so we also are coordinating with them about, are we going to keep, how far we're going to keep that higher fence, and what that'll look like. We also worked with them in getting them a side gate. They wanted their side gate to match the new fence, because they're in favor of putting the new fence in. So, we are going to be building the new fence for them as well, or a new side gate with that fence.
All right, any other questions regarding fencing? And any other, so I think that encapsulates the project, so let's move to public comment. And, Mr. Tapia, do we have anyone who has, at this point, indicated an interest? And I have not made my proper call. For those who would like to comment on this project, please indicate so by clicking on the hand icon that is in your, the upper right portion of your screen, stuck to the side of your dropdown menu.
Good evening, Chair, fellow members of the commission and members of the public. Again, if you do have a comment, please feel free to utilize that hand icon, as the Chair mentioned. I am showing a question mark on my end, Chair Riggs, but I'm not entirely sure if it's related to this project. With your permission, if I may introduce the speaker, just to verify.
Certainly.
Okay. I will go ahead and activate the microphone for Steve Schmidt. You should be able to unmute yourself now.
Mr. Schmidt, welcome. Could you indicate that you are present?
Mr. Schmidt, you should be able to unmute your microphone.
All right, so the, the question mark came in as a text message under chat?
Yeah, it was during the presentation for the, the item currently being presented. They addressed staff that they had a comment that they wanted to add, or a statement that they wanted to add. But it wasn't very specific, it was in regards to this project in particular.
Is, is there any other indication of someone wanting to speak?
Not at this moment, that is the only indication of comments at this time.
All right. Well, I think I'll take it that Mr. Schmidt, having shared his comments in writing, or in some cases in person, did not want to be redundant. So, at this point, I'll close the public comment period. And let's bring it back to commission to ask further questions or comment on the project, or follow up on concerns that you have heard so far. Mr. Cale?
Thank you, I had a couple of quick questions for either the applicant or the architect. Hi, I'm, I'm looking at the side elevations, and you mentioned the sill, someone mentioned the sill height at three feet. Just given how close this is to, say, the right-side neighbor, is there any reason why the, in general, the sill heights on the second floor can't be raised by six inches that would still meet the exiting requirement?
So, the right-hand side, we have a hallway there that has the sills at three feet, and then we also raise the bedroom to four feet, and that's on that right-hand side. Which windows were you particularly asking about?
The hallway ones, and the ones on the opposite side, the, the north elevation, which are also at three feet, and those, I assume, are egress windows, but the sills could be higher and still meet the egress requirements.
Jill, did you want to comment on that?
On the left-hand side, we are quite a bit farther away from our neighbor because of the pushback driveway condition, and so we felt the added distance there in the three-foot sills worked, as Anna noted, at the, at the stairwell, we are another 20-some inches below floor line. So, those sills off of that landing are higher than three feet. So, I guess we just, looking that, we felt it was a good balance and good places to give, without giving up too much natural light.
Okay, so, it sounds like you feel strongly that you'd like to keep those at, keep the sill heights at three feet.
We would prefer it.
Okay, and then just two quick questions on the front elevation. There's the bay on the second floor, is that a flat roof, or is there a, what, what's happening at the top of that?
Yeah, it would be a detailed little, you know, a little bit of slope, but basically a little flat roof area to that box bay.
Okay, and then, the last question is about the shutters on the window to the right of that. That's the only place I see where there are shutters, I'm just wondering what the reason was for those.
That is a very good question, I think, as, as Anna noted, we had gone through some changes in some simplification, and I believe as we did that, somehow those, those ended up as the only shutters. I don't feel strongly about them at this point. So, would, obviously, look, look for instruction or input from the commission.
Just my personal preference is they seem a little out of place, so if it was me, I'd remove them, but I don't, you know, I'm not going to make that a condition of approval, so. Great, thank you.
All right, other commissioner comments? Mr. Ducardi?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify on the, on the fences, so you're going to pay for the neighbors on the right side for the fence and the gate. And then, for the neighbors on the left side, are you, where does that stand? Are you paying for? And then for the neighbors on the left side, are you, where does that stand? Are you paying for a new fence? Potentially, or I think you said, Ms. Felver, that if either you'll come to an agreement and you'll figure it out for a single fence, or you won't come to an agreement and you will build a fence anyway that would just be stepped a little bit back onto the property line? Is that how you would perceive?
Correct. It it all depends on their desire, if their desire is to keep that fence. We wouldn't touch it. We build a fence next to it if needed because that it does jog. So we want to make sure that we're having, we're staying on that property line. If they would like us to remove the fence and build a new one between both and share that fence, that would be great as well. And we'll coordinate with them on the process of how we're going to install it, when, and all the details that go with that. The reason the other neighbor, we talked about their side gate was because their gate was actually right, right up next to that fence. And so they just had a special request and concern. So given that we want to work with them and we want to coordinate and be good neighbors, we we accepted their requests and would like to do that for them.
Okay, thank you. And then on the west, the front elevation. So in front of the garage, there's a is it a gate that's right at the front of the property line with the two brick columns? Is that what?
It's actually set back quite a ways. It's back further than the porch and probably about 10 feet back from the wall.
And what was the thinking? Just, I'm just curious about having it.
Oh, it was just about, the front of the home is a little skinny. And so it was just a way to kind of extend a little bit of architecture and then just give a nice finish to the side yard fencing. So that the side yard fencing comes all the way out and it would give, give the homeowner a little bit of kind of enclosure there to their driveway area.
Okay. And then my last question is, did you consider accessing the garage from the alley? Or was that not practical either because of how the alley is configured or because of the tree or what was? It seems like that would save an awful lot of paving and would give nicer elements for landscaping on the property.
I think the original plan had the driveway right there. So that access is already existing. And so that's why we're utilizing utilizing that curb and that driveway and trying to make it nicer, of course, giving a combo of concrete and gravel and also creating kind of a private courtyard area or offsite parking area. So trying to, trying to offer more in that space.
Okay, thank you. And then back to the stairwell window question. So Commissioner Cale had asked, and I get the point about the natural light. I think the neighbor had suggested a skylight. I wonder if you had considered that? And then what your feelings are about glazing that it wouldn't allow you to see through, but would still allow light in, if you considered either of those two approaches?
I guess, I mean, we are lower. So if a four foot six sill isn't high enough, would raising it six more inches be a better compromise? We'd like to stay away from adding skylights, but it could be something we think about.
So I guess if I heard you, if it comes to something along these lines, you'd rather not do a skylight, you'd rather not do different glazing, you'd rather have some conversation about sill heights?
Yeah.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much.
All right. Other comments? Mr. Cale.
Thank you. I don't have any more questions. So I just wanted to say that the project's a nicely designed project. I think it's approvable. Regarding the light, the stairwell windows, I received a drawing from the neighbor on left, Steve Schmidt. I think a lot of other commissioners may have too. I see his concern, but I'm looking at the section, Section C on A 3.3, that 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 upper landing is at least, I'd say 10 feet back from the window. So I I I have a hard time imagining that the privacy concern is really there. I don't know if other commissioners feel the same or differently. The only other solution would, I would see would be making that a frosted window. But I think you'd have to look at the floor plan. You'd have to be standing at the at the top of the staircase to get any view there. I just don't see that as something that's a major concern. But I'm curious to see what other commissioners think. Otherwise, I think it's a, it's a very provable project. Thank you.
Well, I'll go ahead and respond regarding the, or weigh in regarding the section at the stair window. I think Section C on A 3.3 lends more clarity to the situation where a standing eye will not be, in fact, at sheet 3.3 will not, in fact, be at the window. It will be the standing eye will be some six or eight feet back since there are several treads coming down to the landing. It is important, I think, that the sill height and Ms. Williams, correct me if I'm wrong, the sill height is measured from floor line, not from landing point. Is that correct?
It is currently shown that way as a three feet.
Yeah, I think that makes a big difference where we've had a problem on other projects. As you can imagine, the way houses layout on 50 by 120 lots or 60 by 100 and so forth. Frequently, there's a stair in the middle and tries to get light from one side and as a landing and there's a window. So frequently, we have had a three foot, a three foot six sill at the landing, measured from the landing. And that's a different kind of a problem. So I'm inclined to agree with the former speaker that this issue will work out better than the neighbor was concerned. I would like to ask Ms. Williams, if you considered a taller chimney just for the sake of balance?
We certainly would be happy to look at that with staff.
All right. Well, that's, that's a very helpful, helpful answer. And I think that's I think that's all I would like to ask. I would suggest that that and some kind of memorialization that your team, and I guess I'm addressing Ms. Felver here, will coordinate as best they can with the neighbor on the fence. I also find this project to be very provable. It's rather handsome. I have to say, in my opinion, it's a bit more handsome than some other homes from this developer that we've seen in the last year. So I'm going to break my usual policy and make a motion to approve.
Mr. Riggs, if I may interject briefly, I believe we were able to make contact with Mr. Schmidt, the neighbor. I don't know if the public comment was officially closed.
It was. I did close public comment. And I feel confident that we have addressed the three issues that he raised. So rather than doubling back, which I think is not the best precedent for our hearings, I'd like to continue. Mr. DeCarty.
I completely appreciate it and completely fine with your decision in this. But 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 if a member of the public has had some connectivity problems or some issue arisen where they fully intended to participate in public comment, but then were precluded, I would just say in these times, it's at least worth considering haring on the side of allowing that. But I just wanted to raise it for your consideration, but 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 also support you continuing the way you suggest.
All right. Thank you. I think I will be so bold because we did also have the option to type into chat, which apparently was viable to the to the neighbor who typed in a question mark earlier in the hearing. And I think if I had not had the benefit of the same drawing as Mr. Cale, I might be a little bit more hesitant, but I appreciate the sensitivity of your comment. So my, my motion would be to ask that to approve per the staff report, the use permit. Ask that the applicant work with staff on a possible increase in the chimney height for the sake of scale. And I'll leave it at that between the architect and staff. And that the development team acknowledging that the, and this is not a condition, but this is a formal acknowledgement that the development team intends to coordinate with the adjacent homeowners regarding fence replacement and repair as one does, I think, on any project use permit or not. If that sounds like a reasonable motion, would there be a second? Mr. Barnes?
Yes, I will second and then pursuant to second thing that I'll ask for the maker to consider amending his motion. And just to consider this, you know, I'm looking at the sheet A 3.2. And related to an increase in chimney height, would not the chimney height, if increased materially, create a blockage of the window that is inset effectively behind it on the right elevation?
Yeah, I think that's a good question. I think the setback of approximately three feet or the gap of approximately three feet would prevent that from being a a significant impact. I think we're talking about potentially an increase of 12 to 18 inches only. The chimney cap right now, the metal cap is already higher than the window sill and would be visible in most locations. But this is a good, solid reason why I prefer to suggest that an architect work with our team rather than make a direction that it shall be 14 and one half inches taller in order to satisfy one opinion. So that was my hope, that the flexibility is built in.
Right. And in that motion, should the, should the architect prefer not to, in fact, adjust it? That'll be the sole prerogative of the of the applicant. Is that correct?
Yes, given that the staff is not so directed, I would say yes.
Okay. So with that, with that clarification, my second remains. I think it's a well done project. I think it's well situated. I like the attention to detail. I like how it's the garage is set back in the lot. I think it presents well to the street. So I think it's a well, a well done project, well cited. My second stands.
All right. Well put. Any comments before we go to vote? Any comments from the applicant team? I'll get back to you, Mr. Cale, in a moment. Any comments from the applicant team? I'm sorry. So, Mr. Cale?
I was gonna add that I appreciate how the the front setback is fairly large, an extra five feet, which helps to align it with the neighbors. And also, it sounds like the staff has put a lot of work in to, you know, make materials work and and overall project. So I appreciate both of those items.
Again, well said. Mr. DeCarty?
Yeah, I just want to disclose that I'm acquainted with both sets of neighbors on both sides, but believe I can vote impartially in this instance.
Fair enough. Again, Mr. Barnes?
I'm sorry. I did not disclose that Mr. Schmidt had dropped off a set of plans at my house as well. This evening, we had a very short conversation as it relates to his preferences for this project.
Very good. And may I say that I think this is consistent with commissioners being available to the public and makes all the sense in the world to me personally. All right. With that, seeing no other hands, I'd like to call for the vote. Mr. Turner, any?
Through the chair, yes. Just to clarify, the increase in chimney height and the coordination with the neighbors, those were not conditions of approval?
The fence coordination, the fence coordination is not a condition of approval. The chimney height reviewing with staff is a condition of approval. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
All right. So I'll call for a vote, starting with Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
And Mr. DeCarty?
Yes.
Mr. Dorn?
Yes.
And Mr. Cale?
Yes.
Ms. Tate?
Yes.
All right. And I vote in the affirmative. So that is 6-0 with Ms. Kennedy absent. Congratulations and thank you for bringing a handsome project our way.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
That closes the hearing on 328 Central Avenue. We'll move ahead to item F2. This is a Development Agreement Annual Review, which we do for major projects often. The applicant is Cyrus Sanandaji, if I hope I'm pronouncing that somewhere close, Presidio Bay Ventures. And the project is located at 1300 El Camino Real and at 550 Oak Grove. Essentially, this is at well, I'll let the presenters show the plan. Mr. Rogers, it is wonderful to see you at a planning commission meeting.
Thank you, Chair Riggs and Commissioners. The item before you tonight is the Annual Review of the Development Agreement, or DA, for the 1300 El Camino Real project. The project was previously branded as Station 1300, although it recently has been renamed Spring Line. DA annual reviews are not the most frequent action by the Planning Commission, but for reference, the Commission has reviewed several already in 2020, most recently for the Facebook related projects on May 4. The last station, excuse me, 1300 El Camino Real DA Annual Review took place in July 2019 after the project had commenced construction. At that meeting, the Planning Commission made a determination that the applicant had demonstrated good faith compliance with the terms of the DA. The current staff report has additional details on each of the five DA terms, although the key point is that the project has not yet hit any new milestones. And as such, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission make a similar determination of good faith compliance this evening. No items of correspondence have been submitted regarding the item, and I am available for questions if there are any.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Any questions from our commissioners? All right. Seeing none at this time, I will turn this over to, oh, I hope you correct me, Mr. Sanandaji, to present the project.
Thank you all. Good evening, Commissioners. And Mr. Riggs, that's the closest, most come to pronouncing the last name. So thank you. I appreciate the Commission taking the time this evening. I really did want to take only a few minutes of your time to express our gratitude for the ability to continue to work with the city and furtherance of the original commitment that was made as part of the Development Agreement originally entered into several years ago, prior to the start of construction. Our team has been in regular contact with Thomas and the broader city. Thomas and the broader city family to continue to progress the various responsibilities and obligations that we have as a development towards the city and the broader community. And particularly as we were going through the transition, having taken over the project in June of this year. And with that, really just wanted to convey that the project remains on track despite the sixty day or so delay associated with the shutdown following shelter in place. But nonetheless, we are anticipating TCO of the commercial buildings, the two El Camino buildings. And by the end of this year, early next year, and residential TCO following about 10 months thereafter. And with that, we'll be more than happy to open up the open up to the Commission if there are really any questions associated with the project at this point.
Commission members, any questions? All right, seeing none, let's see if we have any members of the public who have questions or comments on the thirteen hundred El Camino Real project, also known as five fifty five eighty Oak Grove or attached to there too. Mr. Tapia, do we have any indications of anyone finding our hand icon in the upper right portion of the screen to indicate a desire to speak?
At this moment, Chair, I am not seeing any comments or questions, but we can give it a second or two if you would like.
I think that's a good idea, given that this is a prominent project. And I did not pre-introduce the, the hand icon. I will confess, when I attended a city council meeting, it took me over a minute to actually find the icon, since I guess I was expecting it to be within the drop down box. All right, so it does not appear that we have that we have anyone wishing to speak regarding the progress on this project.
That is correct, Chair. I can confirm that. No comments at this time.
All right, in that case, let's bring this back to the Commission. See what what questions we may have. And I beg your pardon while I get this up on the screen. So, Mr. Barnes?
Thank you. So, good evening, Mr. Sanandaji. Thank you for for speaking with us this evening. My first question is related to the ownership structure. It's a little bit off topic specifically to the agreement. However, could you give me an update on Presidio Ventures' position in the deal and who, who's the ownership and what's the ownership structure currently? Because I know there was a transition of ownership not too long ago. Can you tell me how that looks? Excuse me, Presidio Bay Ventures, can you tell me how that looks now?
Of course. The, as part of the transition, the beneficial ownership of the project actually did not change. And so it remains privately held as it was prior to entering into the DA and as it has been since then. Presidio Bay has taken over and restructured the project as the developer and the development manager taking on responsibilities for completion of construction and overseeing the lease up stabilization and then eventually operation of the project as a whole.
Who are the fee owners of the property?
I, it's a private individual and family office. It's locally based and they prefer to keep privacy.
And that's just to, to make sure I got that, that's the same entity that owned it when Greenheart was, I guess, for lack of a better term, acting as in a development capacity, developer capacity. And then that's been passed to, to your entity. Is that correct?
That's correct, Commissioner. Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
And so just to, I think, reaffirm or relay any concerns associated with that, ultimately, the source of financing remains stable and consistent. The transition had nothing to do with any capital needs or concerns around, around that. It was really more related to execution of, of the original vision and the commitments that were made under the DA.
Thank you. The so the provision in the DA which talks to preferential leasing to, in effect, incubators, accelerators, co-working. In a pandemic world, is that a good thing? Is that a bad thing? How, how does that codification of, of, you know, your first look for who you're going to get tenning up in the office space? How's that affecting you? What's, what's your take on that?
Well, if you'd asked me that question six months ago, and I think we would have provided a very different answer, but as it's turned out, and particularly as we've settled into our new norm of working from home and socially distanced and certainly not going back to, to our more urban downtowns where there is a propensity for, for density and high rises and so on. We've actually seen a resurging demand for access to office space and particularly decentralized office space. And so we've had a lot of positive conversations and feel very optimistic that we'll actually be able to secure an incubator and co-working operator to take a significant portion of the ground floor in the south building to fulfill the obligations that, that we have under the original DA. And candidly, I would say that it reiterated the business plan and the need for that type of space in a market like Menlo Park. Whereas prior to COVID, the demand would have come for very different reasons. And so the, what has become evident is working from home is not necessarily optimal for everybody. Whether that's due to childcare reasons, whether that's due to just size of homes and so on and so forth. And so there's a, there's been a plethora of reasons that we've seen people increase demand for, for those types of spaces, particularly in more private settings rather than sort of wider communal spaces.
So it's accurate to say that that may be the type of operator, but your, your build out may look certainly different than it would have done would have been nine months ago with the same operating lessy.
I think that's, that's exactly right. And, and the balance that we need to strike from a design and operational standpoint is certainly determining how to avoid a knee jerk reaction to today's pandemic environment, but at the same time trying to also predict what people's operational and behavioral needs will be on a go for it as a result of the pandemic. But we certainly anticipate far more smaller private sort of meeting rooms and, and smaller private office spaces opposed to what we would traditionally have envisioned as co-working or incubator space, which is generally just a wide open space with a lot of common tables. You know, floating desks and so on.
And then through the chair, if I may, additional question as it relates to the sales tax guarantee. And, you know, more, more specifically to the retail. You know, it was no secret when this was approved, you know, even in the most robust of times, the question was what's going to be the uptake on that retail space? You've got those, you've got the market type space on the one side, and then in the front, you know, it was allocated for, you know, a large restaurant and some other uses, whether it's personal services. And there's a, obviously a sales tax guarantee associated with your DA. For the retail space and that sales tax guarantee, how are you feeling about that and the ability to perform on that?
I think to start, I'd say that our obligations under the DA are very clear and we're, we're very cognizant of what those are and fully intend on meeting them. Regardless of whether the market will allow us to. So we, that was part of the, the, the agreement and that was part of the, the trade that was made to approve the project. I would say that, and I would echo your comment, that even prior to the current pandemic, the shift towards e-commerce and the shift away from traditional brick and mortar retail has made retail as a sector generally very difficult. We, one of the first things that we actually did when we came into the project was evaluate if the structure itself, the, the design of the building itself, the buildings itself lent themselves to efficient operation for F and B users and for other retailers. And found that there were certainly areas that, that needed to be improved if we had a hope of securing vibrant tenancy. And we recognize fully that the entirety of the project's success and ensuring that we can counteract some of the current challenges that are affecting El Camino and, and other areas of downtown, frankly, where they can storefronts. The importance of, of placemaking is, is front and center to our mind and is going to have a intangible, intangible, frankly, effect on the ability to lease the office space and also to lease the residential units. And so paying attention to the retail uses, paying attention to the infrastructure that was missing, paying attention to the operational needs of those spaces, of those retail suites, which we've now since demised based on what we believe to be market demand, as scarce as that may be, is, is our best hope of putting our, our best foot forward to secure tenancy. And we are we know we are going to be spending a lot of time and effort really attracting operators and we need to think beyond what the traditional paradigm of leasing to, to F and B or to other retail operators is and moving more towards structured management agreements in order to cover significant capital expenses upfront and investment in the space in order to entice these businesses, these small businesses that have been struggling for the last seven plus months going through the pandemic. So we are concerned. We are getting ahead of it and we are trying to mitigate both the physical impediments that the project itself presented to leasing the retail space and then also trying to come up with creative financial structures to be able to actually have a vibrant retail tenancy on all sides of the building.
Good. Thank you. I appreciate that.
If I may, before I call on the next Commissioner, I'd like to follow up on Mr. Barnes's comments a little bit. I think Commissioners and certainly developers would be aware of the difficulties with a city required retail portion to a project in Palo Alto on Embarcadero, just west of the one oh one freeway, where a market was required and the market failed, but the market held on to the lease, which put the developer in a very difficult position. The second market, I believe, also struggled. It was a difficult location, although that's odd because there's a residential neighborhood right there, which is finds that market area rather convenient or did find it. So we don't generally see that problem with a shopping mall. And having had the benefit of advice or casual, but long-term acquaintance with a manager of a shopping mall, I'm aware that tenants are chosen for their harmony. And in order to create a minimum required activity level in that area, certainly a retail area as small as thirteen hundred El Camino has to in some way work off of our downtown. May I, may I ask, are you approaching this the, the retail tenant location with these things as, with this coordination and this goal of traffic and activity as primary motivations?
Sure, Riggs, that's a, an excellent question and absolutely. Placemaking is at the front and center of our strategy. And not just as it relates to the retail, but our goal with Spring Line as a whole is to create a destination both for downtown and within downtown and for our neighbors, but also beyond Menlo Park. And that comes with a very special eye to curating the tenancy so that there's complementary uses that can really serve what the overall goal of the project is, which is to provide activation seven days a week. We have the benefit of having a variety of uses in one project, which is rather rare at the scale and certainly in the Bay Area, not just from Menlo Park. And so what that allows us to do is provide retailers with the ability to have a, a degree of confidence in the density that will exist and the demand that will exist beyond just your typical business hours of nine to five or Monday to Friday, which is often where downtowns, even San Jose or San Francisco, even at that larger scale, struggle, as you know, is that the retailers really are only beholden to the business community and, and the business tenancy. And so given that we have these hundred and eighty three units, it provides us with this incredible opportunity to provide a balanced tenancy and, and demand base to the, to the retailers themselves. And so we are being very prescriptive and, and purposeful with our sort of placemaking strategy and identifying the exact type of retailers that we are targeting, because at this point, you know, even 10 months ago, just putting up a sign didn't work to lease retail. It, it certainly could have and did not for a variety of reasons to lease the office space in this building, because prior to an involvement, there was, there was no office leasing done either. But that was not an issue that plagued office. It certainly did retail. In order to be successful, we really are taking a, a very direct and purposeful approach and targeting specific types of retailers and groups of retailers with a, with a holistic retail mix in mind.
All right, good to hear. And you can imagine those of us have, who have watched and or supported the project wish you the very best of luck and therefore wish Menlo Park downtown the best of luck. So
I appreciate that very much.
Of course. Other comments? Or questions regarding the project and good faith effort thereof? All right. So I'll turn to Mr. Rogers. Do you have the kind of input that you need or do you need us to weigh in more specifically with a finding of of intention here?
Yeah, thank you. This has been very informative. The Commission does need to make an action as recommended. Yeah, thank you. This has been very informative. The commission does need to make an action as recommended in the staff report. We, as staff, are recommending that you make a good determination that the applicant has demonstrated good faith compliance with the terms of the DA. And if that succeeds, then we'll be concluded at this meeting.
All right, very good. I would entertain a motion at this point, given that there are no more questions.
I have a question.
Mr. Barnes.
Is staff because staff saved me a couple hours of, or an hour of going online and doing title searches to find out who the owner is of this property? Or could you save me some time and just tell me who the owner is of the property? I think it's I think it's unusual that at this far into the process, we don't, that it is such a tightly held secret. I get that it is tightly held for whatever reasons, but is that something that staff could disclose who the ownership is?
Well, it is in terms of, you know, who owns the parcel as recorded by the county. It is a limited liability company that's called Real Social Good Investment. We as staff don't typically go farther than that if there's not, you know, volunteered information from the applicant side. So we don't know who the officers are as a sort of standard matter. Typically, the ownership just being presented, you know, as an LLC is relatively common. Other properties are held in trust. Yeah, so that, at this point, that's all that we as staff know. I've never met the ownership or had any contact with them, aside from, you know, working directly with Greenheart before and with Presidio Bay Ventures now.
Okay. Thanks, Thomas. Thank you.
Right. Any other questions or motion? So, and I will make the motion. I find this rather easy to make, so I'm a bit surprised that the commission finds or commission can make a determination here that Presidio Bay Ventures has demonstrated good faith compliance with the provisions of the 1300 El Camino Real Development Agreement for the period of July 2019 through October 2020, as attached to the staff report. And Mr. Barnes, second. Thank you.
Yeah, and I do want to recognize the efforts in trying times for pushing this project through. The cranes are working. People are coming out of the ground. People are throwing nails. So thank you for your continued progress on an important project in Menlo Park. It's appreciated.
And I must say, I concur with that. So at this point, I will call for the vote on that motion, starting alphabetically, which I guess should start out well. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
And Mr. DeCarty?
Yes.
And Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Mr. Cale?
Yes.
Ms. Tate?
Yes.
And I concur. So we're doing well tonight. We have another six-to-love approval with Ms. Camille Kennedy absent. And again, congratulations on the continuation of the project. With any luck, I think your timing is going to be is going to be beneficial. There should be a certain amount of built-up hunger by the time this project is, what, another nine months or 12 months before one can actually take a tour? And very much looking forward to this. So that includes the public hearing.
If I may just provide 15 seconds of comment. First of all, thank you to all the commissioners. Really appreciate your time. I know this is the first time that at the firm, Presidio Bay is presenting in front of this commission. We certainly do look forward to a lot more interaction in the coming years, particularly as we finish off this project. And so look forward to establishing that relationship. And I just wanted to thank Mr. Rogers and Mr. Andrews as well. They've both been extremely helpful in our team's transition and continuing to allow us to do what we're doing now. And it really is a team effort and the partnership we've found with the city and city staff has been tremendous. So thank you for your time this evening, commissioners. Thank you to staff as well.
All right, well said. With that, I will close the public hearing portion of our meeting. That leaves just the informational items, and I will return to Ms. Sandoire for at the least our prediction of how hard we're going to work after our one-week break.
So for the next meeting, that's going to be November 2nd, and we just have a single-family home use permit on that agenda. I don't have any other updates, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions, Ms. Sandoire, about upcoming meetings or about planning commission issues? Mr. Barnes?
So Ms. Sandoire, thank you. We had, going back a couple months ago, talked about giving some structure to neighbor outreach and how that works. And there was a discussion about how prescriptive that should be. Has any progress been made on putting some additional structure to what was in place three months ago in terms of what the expected outreach is going to be and how to report out on that?
We've had some discussions on it, and we've definitely encouraged applicants to do more outreach and provide better documentation. We haven't done anything formal, but definitely it looks like from the last couple of meetings that that would be helpful. So we will work on that.
I'm sorry, work on?
Getting something more structured in place so we can get more confirmation of outreach that's been done, because I know sometimes there's been issues where there's confusion, where an applicant believes they've reached out to a certain neighbor and the neighbor is not aware of that. So we want to clear up any of those kind of misunderstandings.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. I think it levels the, levels the process for everyone involved and, you know, adds some transparency. So I'll query back again in a month or two and see how that's going. But thank you for your efforts on that.
Thank you for your follow-up, Mr. Barnes. And I would like to check in with Mr. Doran and Ms. Tate. I don't recall whether it was November 2 that we might have a check-in with the ADU Subcommittee.
It was November 2nd. That was scheduled.
All right, and are you still comfortable with that?
Yes, I think so. We've met on the phone a couple of times, and we have another one scheduled for this week. So I think we'll have something to report by November 2nd.
All right, looking forward to that. All right, any other comments, reports, or questions from our commission before we adjourn? All right. With that, we will adjourn this meeting of October 19, 2020, Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, staff. Thank you, Chair Riggs.
All right, everyone.